... meeting order. Again, I want to thank everyone who showed your support, your concern for the city by attending the meetings. First item is road call. Doesn't count if we're busy. Be in here, we'll have. Approval of agenda, we've all had options, the current agenda is over. I hear motion, we have heard, I said that it's printed. So move. That's exactly. Councillor Lawson, lots of need to be discussion. Any discussion? All favors out.
Aye.
Opposed thing? Next would be the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, that'd be on July seventeen workshop session, July eighteenth ready call meeting and August fourth special call meeting. I hear motion with seven printed.
How many motion?
Motion for Councillor's team, they're second. Second Councillor, let's y'all. Any discussion? Any discussion? All favors out.
Aye.
Opposed thing? I'm going to sit in there, my chair, there's no other hearings.
That's correct.
And the only visitor presentation we had was a recitation of two thousand sixteen fiscal year audit and they don't, you tell us now that they're not here tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, sir, y'all have the copies qualified for this information. There you go. Verified.
Okay. I guess a copy we posted in the office been like, correct?
Yes, sir. You do that and I'll say, uh, exactly, has not been earned.
Okay. Okay, so should we, pretty short meeting. Am I correct, there's no unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Thank everybody for doing, good job, stay on top of everything. New business. Update what you need. Uh, update nine one one addresses throughout the city. It says we're going to take action on this tonight. But, uh, is this something, as the attorney, is this something that, uh, we do or is that something that goes through, the emergency manager of the town office?
Well, I think we discussed at the workshop, you can have a vote of clear about the management's group. I think Councillor's team.
That's, that's, that's all needs to be done. It is, uh, on the plaque, it shows that it is a grid order. But, um, on the street, the street sign over in subdivision called Paper Drive, I think the managers are going to order that sign tomorrow. And that's all we need to do, but even nine one one in that subdivision is already started. So, the only thing that needs to be done is for us to correct the sign. Correct the sign, this area, this area is also, she is Paper Drive and it needs to be, it is on our plaque, it's grid from the drive throughout of that. That's the only thing that needs to be done.
Okay, this is, uh, the Darian Hall subdivision off from Franklin Street.
That's correct.
Is that a product subdivision? Would that deserve streets to be proud or associate main street?
I believe the streets are dedicated to us, true.
We're supposed to vote me on my big vote, yeah, but I'm not the chairman, sounds like it.
If, if, if the nine one one needs a written reservation, the flag may start from. I can hear that, it's true.
So you're motion that we update the nine one one address throughout the city. I hear motion by Councillor Shaw, they're second.
Yes, sir.
Second Councillor, speaking. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, uh, thanks to citizens for contacting the council and the scheme concerning that. I like the way you worded, is it anywhere in the future, I talked about tonight. Uh, think you worded, update nine one one. In other words, I'm trying to prevent each time we find out it's an error, we have to vote again. Is there any blanket way that we can turn it over to the attorney and managers and handlers? Cause I think there has been a lot of that in the past and you only find it out when they can't find a house or something like that. Most of us, you know, we're citizens, we don't know that night, but like, sometimes it's wrong. Something is talking in the future, we can discuss it later, that if we find, or just like, kind of almost accidentally found out something, we fix it this way. But soon we might have to come back again to.
City Attorney, Attorney General, those one, I think, right there. This says, well, we're voting on time to update nine one one addresses throughout the city, not just that one neighborhood throughout the neighborhood. Eric, we're talking about.
Okay, I think, I think it's such a.
Well, say, just say the place, what Councillor's team adds. This will say it, move out of the city, uh, throughout the city, get hold of city, once you see that one neighborhood.
And this can depend on, on the motion that's on the floor.
I think it's, I think it's overall, uh, was broad, it's accepted, that's what the mayor said. This was to be able to update throughout the city and council members to bring to our attention and to grant approval of nine one one. I mean, it's a simple fix. So, that being said, is this acceptable in order for, for us to be able to?
Well, to that point, it's not coming to council every time. I mean, if, if this body votes on it, it's acceptable, but I'm looking down the line, but a council member identifies a street and says the name is wrong and another council member says, no, it's not. And so I think that you have, whether or not to change your street, uh, you probably need to discuss. And I hate to say that, but I think there's, there's laws in place that requires you to change the street.
No, please, I'm not making you. And I foresee that, that maybe that's definitely.
My point was, not us, uh, my understanding is that life or death goes with the nine one one. That whatever we have matches the nine one one, but I was intrigued saying, it has, it doesn't have to be broken. We're matching nine one one, am I correct?
That, that is correct. And, and just so you know, this came up, a close tumor moved over in this subdivision and his wife was trying to get him down there. And of course, he had run up against the wall and, you know, when some of the residents, when their addresses were not, they don't cover the nine one one, and you know, we went through this with the nine one one system. We had a bunch of different addresses. And some, some people had two addresses. So, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that the nine one one system is done through the county? Or it, we don't do the GPS, that's straight through the GPS system, correct? Does that not automatic when we, the older subdivision, or when new houses come up? Does that not automatically come about?
Well, it should, I mean, there's a process of communication between everybody. But again, the naming of a street and the municipal street system, it's a function of this body. I mean, nine one one center can't name our street, they don't, that's not invented, uh, this body does. So I think if we want to identify the change in the street, then I think we need to identify that by motion. Now, if you want to correct the city manager, uh, in concert with me, to see what errors we think may exist in nine one one, we can certainly do that. But the change in the name of the street, I think y'all, we'll have to come back and y'all to vote on that, maybe even some action. And I think, I think what Mayor Brokhead doesn't want is every need, we got some street changes. If you want us to, to try to figure out where the discrepancies are, um, we can certainly do that.
So we need just to vote on this street changing the name back to what is actually on the plaque?
Okay, and then we can discover the extract.
Does that call under your office?
Um, the nine one one?
The way, what we're talking about is here in the.
No, nothing there, we usually, the court of court, the citizen's subdivision, they'll have it out. For the person who owns the property will figure out which way those streets they want to, and then they will vote it. They have to file it as far as the plaque goes. And then, as far as naming, um, I, I don't know the names, you usually it's the person building the subdivision.
Go ahead, introduce yourself and let everybody know it's your office.
Hey, Governor, maybe you can pay your dividend, chief of crazy, make a touch count. Just get it, right?
Appreciate it, thank you for your information. And thank you, sir, appreciate your, uh, the. Okay, so we clear on?
Do I need to make a motion to?
We're. We already got a motion, that's second, any more discussion? Any more discussion? All favors, aye.
Aye.
Opposed thing? Uh, next item, consider the ordinance to adopt changes to the municipal charter pursuant to the home rule provisions of the Fisher Code of Georgia. We'll take action on this tonight, that is, uh, Mayor Porten Lawson brought this up, do you have any update or anything you want to say on that?
Uh, just briefly, I know there'll be discussion later. What brought this about, we kind of ran into a road loss, and one time the, um, the charter, uh, or the code was saying slightly different things and, uh, it was changed a few years ago, about five years ago. And having done so, uh, the mayor could not have a forum if he had Councilman Cox and Councilman Shaw. The year before that, that would constitute a forum. So it created a huge problem. And what the huge problem was, if Councilman Steen was, 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 was out with his family and Councilman Lawson at the last minute, uh, had flat tire on ninety-five and could not be here, uh, the city is shut down. And we're trying to avoid that. It created a problem, any two councilperson can stop the situation. Under the new provision, thanks to help of our attorney, manager and this poor council, uh, that will never happen again. So it's a good thing, it's nothing new, that's the way it was, uh, in the past.
And I know we usually go into discussion, have the motion, I want everybody to clear on what someone is going to make a motion or cite a motion. Do I hear a motion that we, we do this?
Make motion, Mr. Mayor.
Make motion, Senator Jordan, uh, ordinance, do without changes to the notice. Do I hear, I have a motion, but, uh, Mayor Porten Lawson, they're second. I second, second Councillor's team, any more discussions?
I'd like some discussion, if you may, please. Um, my problem with doing that is one ward could have a meeting and another ward not know what happened in that meeting. One ward could be represented and the other ward totally left out. So that would be my problem.
Good thing.
North ward could be represented itself, not know what happened in the meeting until after the next one. Okay, I'll just read it out of the paper. So with three required, then both wards would be represented.
I can see your point, you on that. But, and I thought about that myself, two things kind of got me thinking that it would be possible. First off, I'm here to represent the whole borough. The other thing is, the previous administration, I think y'all didn't have a problem with that. And then all of a sudden, it's changed.
Well, that was a reason the table was changed was so both wards would have representation. But that's not what we done without both wards being represented. So that's, that's what I like to bring forward at this point. And make aware that I probably will oppose it for that reason. But I think both wards need to be represented when meetings are done and changes are made.
And again, I mean, I can see your point, but that's why each, each district has two represented from that district and, but I understand what you're saying.
Yes, one ward could get off control, another ward not know what happened until the resubway to the next meeting.
Well, how many, I mean, this, just like your speech, Robinson, and I'm not this cute, but how many of us go out after the city council meeting and let everybody in our ward vote, the only way they are going to know about it is to watch it on TV.
Show up here at the meeting. It's not, it's not the way they get the information, it's the fact that they can get that out of the information process.
And we had a vote.
They asked you to vote it, which is what they're here to do.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's proclamation without representation is what it is. The whole purpose is representation, okay?
I, I agree with the mayor. I had checked back to the sixties and the fifties and the forties of the process established. But, uh, the way that we going back to now is the way it's always been for at least fifty years. And it was only changed, uh, five years ago. I, I agree with the mayor, the mayor represents slightly an S R two position. Uh, the only person on this council, uh, that receives votes from everybody in the city. And, uh, so he will always represent the north ward if the Shaw or myself is not here. And if Mr. Cox, Mr. Steen happen to have that, those rare things happen, it's out of all our control. Uh, Mr. Mayor will represent the south ward. And we might have reminded each of us that, uh, the city was down to, I think, only two individuals. We didn't even have a mayor. This is documented, not many years ago. And, uh, city went along fine and I would speak highly of this council. I don't want any indication of this council, uh, trying to have some sort of secret meeting to, to hurt the city or not represent. We all have a very good system now, we shoot out emails, text messages all the time. That's what I love about this council, everybody knows pretty much everything. Even if it's a conference, we all hash it out. And, uh, so I would just say that to agree with the mayor, the mayor represents every corner, every citizen in the city, all of us on it.
And I, you know, I'm on the drainage committee. To me, anybody, anybody in a lot have in the north ward, call me. So, we represent the whole city, we, all of us do, I, I believe. But I understand your point, um, but, you know, our job is, each one of us, I believe, is representing.
The only other thing that, that I see on that is, uh, I remember one too, a little ago, that we had, uh, had a council member design, I'm standing, it's three councilmembers. And one, one or two of them would be gone, all we'd be gridlocked, couldn't have a meeting.
That's what I see.
Only, did all the things with that. And, uh, I think it's already, and the city attorney, that's already in our, says in our, uh, community code that the mayor and two councilmembers, nice.
That's correct.
So we got to change either to charter or we got to change this, yes, we got one or the other.
And the reason for this is a charter change, so there has to be two votes on this, if, if it's approved tonight. I have to vote on it, and next week, I have published notice of charter change in the middle, as well as.
Again, my concern is, is representation, and it's not enough in person, the mayor, I know he supports the whole city. My concern is not about you, Mr. Mayor, it's about a mayor that might follow you. And we're, in fact, we're setting precedents from now through history. And we don't know who's going to fill these seats. Much less who's going to fill these others up here. So, um, I think representation is important, I think that's what the people serve, so I'm just going to tell you where I stand on it. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
I would like to, uh, encourage the people that hear about this city, is, we got to vote on this twice, it's not, we'll be passed tonight. So if you got a concern or anything, be at our next workshop and, uh, let us hear your thoughts on it and everything, and then when we vote again, I'm sure everybody up here will take it down to consideration, see you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor, just to address the council office is concerned, it's important to note that our ordinances are not changing. All the number of votes required are passed, it's still going to be a majority of the whole council. So even if there's only three here, all three of you would have to approve, if it's two to one, to split that night, it will not pass. So, two votes will never be able to pass.
And for me, like my concern is stating, like I said, one ward can be represented with the mayor and the other ward not represented other than the mayor.
I like, I like what you brought up, both three has to be, um, able to go past, and then just to carry on the meeting, she's, she's counsel.
That's right, and I agree with, uh, I would, I see, uh, Council Cox's point, that's why we have to be careful to vote, let's vote someone that we can depend on and that we will, uh, give it their time.
Yeah, I think what the attorney said, addresses, uh, council, uh, cops. It's been about all the time, it's been, it's been, uh, so probably bothered that if you call it a cessation. Uh, that, uh, that this, uh, not a lot, there's a half a day next to make. There's a long way to go, so wait, one moment to somebody tired, it's, uh, I, uh, to be honest, that's what we go to. Super serious, I have to die, that's, uh, there's, uh, downtown, uh, I, I have, I have.
First come, first served, twice. I said, I'm going to save the part myself, I'm going to get hit a third time, so that I don't want to be presented anything that may have made and voted. Same baby. Set, uh, entered one night, it's best one. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All favors, aye. I take it, well, let's do a roll call on this. Uh, we're going to start with a roll call, uh, Councilman Steen having a woman. I thought, yes, Council Lawson, yes, Councilman Shaw, Councilman Cox, Mayor. That would have, that would be a regarding for the first, uh, I'd say, uh, all of citizens, period, this, reading this in the paper and, uh, single TV plus, uh, we're not. If you have any concerns about it, be at our next workshop and, uh, the city council meeting. I'd say your opinion is all, your thoughts, your comments, your concerns. Okay, back to, uh, President, uh, State of the City, uh, City Manager, uh, next to come, unless, uh, it's fine, Joe. Talked a lot about the city for the ones, and, and again, I encourage everybody to come to our city meeting. We had a town hall meeting, uh, Congressman Buddy Carter. And one of, uh, people on the audience on the high end of the city, they'll have, have a awesome look. Our city council meeting at our workshop to, and I encourage everybody to come to those and let's hear your concern. Now, we hear something on the street, get in touch with, uh, City Hall, City Manager himself, or the Councilman, or the Attorney. Or come to the workshop, the city council meeting, and that way you'll get it all worked out. Y'all, uh, hear a lot talk on the street. And anyway, uh, we are going to have, uh, another presentation of the State of the City at a later date. It would be close to, uh, the same, uh, city council meeting, and we want to show the same slideshow. And let the, uh, City Manager give his speech along with, uh, the parent council, or, uh, at that time, but we'll say everything, looking good. And starting to stick up.
I think it's common on that, as well, I was looking forward to seeing it today. I guess the decision was made, not to have it today, like Maxie, Gary Taylor, hopefully he'll be here in that time, or maybe himself. Also, uh, again, uh, so, very good presentation, uh, dealing with the affairs of the city. There's a lot of stuff, I mean, dealing with all the clinical success, some of them we need work on, but one like one side. Very impressive, I'm hoping that you gather some important things, uh, you know, more about, uh, this, this paper. Very. President, certainly. Not real, real council force.
I'll make it short, um, you know, last night, we had a discussion, uh, doing our accounting for this. We've been asking, uh, to not wish to meet with, uh, this service leader, we've started. You know, it may not be something we can work out in one meeting or two meetings, I hope it is. But we, we very much need this, uh, uh, the council, uh, our city manager, our attorney, we evolved, passed. Newness comes, uh, I've asked, run the camera several times. So, please, let's get together, get this meeting started, because we can get this city. This is really good. Then, we got to have it done by twenty eighteen, passion. Except, uh, uh, twenty eighteen's coming. So, please, let's get this.
Just a moment, because, uh, that, because she asked me, uh, to, uh, stay in the state life. You know, it was one of my, uh, as a part of the, uh, but, uh, maybe it's just one of the issues, uh, so.
You know, that's what I'm talking about, as a public, but, but it is just, what the issue comes. This is, I mean, for that, you know, I'm seeing it, they, it's kind of long, I'm not that, they're asking how. The special, the, almost, uh, it's very open, so. There's, there's, uh, this is a state, you know, you must have, uh, behind the, uh, this is my, as.
Uh, yes, again, I thank this council, so the shots, and, uh, great presentation. Business plan, all strategic planning, and a lot of work on the business, on the business plan.